Well, here we go. The first council meeting of the new council. This 24th day of October and we'd like to call the meeting to order. We'd like to also welcome our media Corey MacAlister for panel 32. And in the gallery if we have our financier.
The peanut gallery.
We have Hawkins Coin for the financial department of the town. So we have an agenda here. And I do not have any additions to that agenda. So if you feel comfortable with that agenda, I need a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion.
Councilor Scott has approved the agenda. All in favor? Thank you very much. We have a delegation. And you will talk when the budget comes at the table. So under four adoptions of minutes. You have the regular meeting of October 10, 2017. Feels a little strange because most of you were not in attendance. I reviewed the minute and find them correct.
Because I was in attendance, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of October 4th.
10.
10.
2017. Thank you. Questions regarding that, Councilor Barnes? Do you have? No? Okay. So all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Those minutes are now approved and will be signed. We now have the bylaw and policy item under five. And because the MGA is new, we will let Jeff help us maneuver a little bit this new document.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. What I wanted to do tonight is I just have about eight sections I wanted to reference. Not necessarily because they're new, but because I've just found them really important in how we function. And so particularly for the new councilors and for those of you coming back, this is the January 2017 amendment. It has not been amended for a lot of years. And so this is the first big amendment. In fact, inside the sleeve of your MGA is some yellow papers. They're still amending kind of on the fly, but they wanted a print copy out in time for the election. So there's still going to be updates and we'll be getting you new ones, I'm sure, in a few months when newer things and everything's solidified. So I just want to do a bit of a quick tour of the MGA as far as sections that you can look at as councilors to understand your role and my role and then our collective role. And there's a lot of stuff in this. I've read it from cover to cover and it's painful at best. So it's a great reference document. It's not an exciting read, but it's a great place to go for good information. So I just wanted, and by all means if there's questions, I'm not an expert on it, but I can get around it, okay? I want to start on, by the way, it's in sections. So there's, you can either go by page number or section. So section 153 or page 93 is where I wanted to start off. I guess I should mention while we're getting there, a couple of the big changes in the Act include the intermunicipal collaboration framework or ICFs that you're going to start hearing that acronym a lot. So that's been laid out and also the training of councilors following the election. But we're not going to hit on too much of that. But just for your information, Division 3, Section 153, it's the duties of councilors according to the Act. You're to consider the welfare and interest of the municipality as a whole and to bring to council's attention anything that would promote the welfare or interest of the municipality. And to participate generally in developing and evaluating the policies and programs of the municipality. And it goes on, just participate in council meetings, obtain information from me, keep confidential stuff you're supposed to keep confidential. And that's, that's your role as a councillor as defined by the MGA. And in section 156, you just did this, you're all required to take the oath of office. So that was done and you've made that commitment. And that's one of the requirements under the Act. One other thing that comes up, we hear it in other communities and it's a great cause of issue for them, is section 170, page 100. And this is surrounding this notion of pecuniary interest. And it's just something that you as councilors need to be aware of enough that you keep yourself out of being in a pecuniary interest. So pecuniary interest is simply conflict of interest with a financial bend. It's a financial conflict of interest. That's what it means. It's the only conflict of interest mentioned in the MGA. So the MGA doesn't preclude you from participating in discussion because you know a guy that knows a guy on a matter that isn't financial. It's purely pecuniary stuff. And there's a bunch of things here. But in short, you have a pecuniary interest if it could monetarily affect you or one of your employers. So if you work for someone, then you need to declare that. And if you know the matter could monetarily affect your family. That's the wide broad strokes. The interesting thing about the Act is the onus is on you individually to declare the conflict. It's not for me to say, you know, councillor court, I think you probably have a conflict you should excuse yourself. That's not how it works. You self-police that and you declare it yourself.
Okay, Jeff? Councillor Court, go ahead.
An example, I guess an example, my son's on the Rotarians. They're going to be wanting to come into town for money for the water park. Do I have to excuse myself for that?
Unless your son, I would say, is getting monetarily compensated due to the success or not of the Rotarians, no, there's no monetary gain here by that. And he's working for a benevolent club, trying to do things for the community and the interest of the community. So in my opinion, you would not have a pecuniary interest.
Okay.
But here is a little bit of the gray area. If you feel there would be, in your opinion of the public, a perceived conflict, that is up to you to decide what to do.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so you can read, it goes on and on about how you, all the things where reasons that you don't have one, you can read that at your leisure if you think you're going to find yourself in that situation. One thing I will just follow up with the mayor's comment though. If something is uncomfortable or you wish to not be attached to a discussion at the table, you actually have an obligation to vote on the matter.
That's right.
You don't just get to excuse yourself because you don't want to be attached to it. You're still part of the council and you have to have a very legitimate reason to refrain from voting. And so just something to keep in mind. But pecuniary interest is always seems to be a sticky topic and councillors find themselves in a world of trouble with it. So just be aware of it and we'll deal with each situation. One other thing, just because I've seen it before in other communities is it's not appropriate to sit at the council table and debate the topic at length and then leave for the vote. So if you know you have an interest up front, declare it up front. So don't debate it for two or three meetings and then say, oh, we're at the vote, I may have an interest. Because you were influencing the debate all that time, right?
Jeff, it's interesting that you watch other councils, you know, declare that fiduciary responsibility or they don't. But how they excuse themselves, they just push themselves away from the table. Would it be wise for us to completely dispose of ourselves out of the room?
So what the Act says, and I can't, I don't have it in front of me exactly, but when you, when you excuse yourself from the table, you can represent yourself as a taxpaying citizen of the community. And you can observe in the gallery in that capacity. Now, if you just wish to have yourself removed so there's no, there's no, there's no perception from the public, you're influencing the rest of council, by all means, you leave the room. But you have the option as an affected taxpayer to view from the gallery.
See, this was, this was an interesting topic that come up at Brownlee in the bear pit session. Because they were talking about two councilors were at odds with each other and where does that councillor excuse himself? And because council members, family member of that council was working for the, for the municipality. And so it was asked, should he be sitting in the gallery or should he be completely out of the room? And the lawyer that handled that said he should be totally excused out of the room so that the eye contact can be made, you know, and...
Influenced.
Influenced. And so that was an interesting bear pit session.
So case by case, and you determine. This sounds really odd because I actually have a favorite section of the MGA. It's, it's section 180 and it's very simple, but the councilors who have been this last term will understand how it affected our deliberations and your deliberations and my instructions so much. Page 108, section 180. So it's the methods that you may act, so how you can do what you do. And section 180 says a council may act only by resolution or by law. So what we had, and I think, I hope we get to this point, council, where we have a good rapport, we have a high level of trust, we have good discussion and good banter. But what we had is we had a lot of times when council would say, hey, look into that, check that out and get back to us on that, or let's do that and see how it goes. But there wasn't a resolution to do it. And so we made a shift where if council wants administration to do something, you make a resolution to direct administration to do something. Because now there's no ambiguity to me whether that's an assignment or not. There's no ambiguity to the councilors whether that was collectively the will of councilor on. And it keeps me from having to juggle personal agendas around the table where I have one councillor wanting all manner of information, all manner of homework done, and that's actually not a priority at the table. So if your, if your motion fails, I don't carry out the assignment. And so, you know, we've had a lot of comments over the last couple of years where you say, hey Jeff, could you look into that and get back to me? You bet. Do you want to make a motion to that effect? There's a motion made and away we go. And it's clarified things so well, it's worked really well. And so that's a, that's a little tiny blip of the MGA that I really like. But as long as you're making resolutions, and as an aside, this last council made, you know, hundreds of resolutions. Yeah, it's a couple more things in the minutes, but it certainly keeps things unambiguous as to the wishes of council. The next, I want to just hit quick, section 205, page 114. And that is simply that you must by rule have me or someone like me, not me in particular, but you must have a CAO. That's the rule. And so it goes through the duties and responsibilities of the CAO and what council delegates the CAO and that you must evaluate annually. We just discussed that in the CAO council covenant. And so those are things you must do and they're important things to do. And that just goes through my role. And then if you flip over the page to 117, along with me, in section 210, the town has designated officers. So these are people with whom the council has delegated responsibility to carry out specific functions. So I'm a designated officer for a wide swath of things. But we also have, for example, Morgan Straddy is a designated officer of the town to carry out the assessment function of the town. So you have to by bylaw designate that authority, not just anyone can come in and pick up that authority. They can't say, I'm going to assess for you, here we go. Nolan Card is a designated officer only for the purposes of signing planning documents for the town. That's been designated.
And Ryan from Orsk is...
Ryan isn't, he cannot commit or sign for the town on anything. He's simply there to consult with the town. And so that's, we have different positions and one of these days as we go through all this process, I'm sure that the designated officer bylaw will come up and you'll be able to see that. And I think that's the only ones, Morgan, Nolan, myself. Jill, are you a designated officer? I don't think...
Yes. And she has to be for director of corporate services.
Yeah, and for emergency services as well. Yeah. So those are just some of the pieces I wanted to touch on as we kind of start this process. And what I will try and do, council, is when we do our backgrounders and when we give you information, I'll try and cite where possibly the MGA, where it's needed. Why is this, why are we doing what we're doing? What's the point? What's the regulation behind it? And I'm not an expert in this at all, but I'm relatively familiar with it. And we lean on municipal affairs quite a bit too. So that's all I wanted to do for today's MGA overview unless there's any other questions specific to the legislation. And this is a document that we kind of ease our way into. We refer to it on specific items and how it applies to specific items, but to generally go through it from cover to cover, I think is a bit of a futile exercise.
Councillor Barnes?
Yeah, Jeff, I just want to ask you a question regarding a designated officer for the assessment, Morgan Straddy. Now, if I can recall, wasn't it for a specified period of time, a contract period of time for two, three years?
I'd have to look at that, yeah.
Jill thinks it is, that's what I was thinking. Whereas the other ones are...
Yeah, we, you may recall previous councilors, we actually changed it so it was by position and not by name, with the exception of the assessor.
Right.
So the development officer was for planning, the director of corporate services was for emergency and she can sign checks, so it was for that as well, the CAO. So we did it by position, so when there was turnover, we weren't having to fix the bylaw. But the assessor is specific and time bound.
Well, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
Correct.
All right, thank you so much, Jeff. Let's go to 5B. The bylaw 1652 has now been amended and you now have on the front of you the amended version with corrections of date, times, names, et cetera, which has then need to be fixed.
Madam Mayor?
And you want to talk to that because I can see the changes have been highlighted.
If I could, for bylaws, one of the things under the Act is I just, the CAO is to introduce the bylaw and read the preamble. So this is bylaw 1652, council procedural bylaw, and this is a bylaw to govern the procedure and the transacting of business by the council and committees of council. The changes in this bylaw that are proposed are on page 5, Part 14. This is actually inadvertent, we just found this word missing in review. It's, you must not use, offensive word, so we added it when it was amended. And we remove that sentence after the semicolon as per councillor's motion. And other than that, we go all the way to page 16, section 50. And this was simply to move the CCW meeting to 5 o'clock and to adjourn by 8:00 PM as per the motion of the organizational meeting. Those are the changes in the bylaw. Now, for council's information, this requires three readings to adopt. And what happens in, normally you do not pass three readings to a bylaw in one meeting. With the exception that if you unanimously agree to allow for the third reading, you may. My recommendation is because this is simply procedural in nature and has no impact on the residents, it would not be inappropriate, but certainly at the discretion of council whether you want to do three readings.
Yeah. So...
I move the first reading of bylaw 1652, council procedural bylaw.
All right, any questions to that effect? Saying none, all in favor? Thank you. Councillor Barnes?
I move second reading of bylaw 1652, council procedural bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So now the question is, can we entertain a motion to allow three readings?
I'll make a motion, go ahead, Jill, on the, on here.
I make a motion to make third and final reading.
To allow...
To allow third and final reading of bylaws 1652.
All right. So that to allow third reading, all in favor? Thank you. Councillor Court?
No, I'm...
Well, you need to make the last motion to allow for third reading.
I will make the...
Not to allow, but to have it.
Okay, to add it. Make the motion for third reading of bylaw, whatever it is, 1652, got it?
Yeah. And there is always a motion after the allowing the motion. All in favor? Thank you very much, we're done. We have amended it and it's fixed. Thank you. Now we're going to have a presentation by our finance department and our administrator of the first draft of the budget.
You will never guess what I have for you.
And we are grateful to Hawkins for being here.
More paper.
And for his diligent work and presentation that we will receive. Thank you. Be used to it, it's going to take about a half a dozen of those people before we get fully out of what's in there. All the change. It's about, yeah, takes about that many changes.
You ready for me?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. With the first meeting post-election, we debated quite a bit about how do we introduce a budget on the first meeting of the new council. Because it's maybe not fair to try and get you all the financial context in the first meeting. So here's what I'm proposing. I'm going to steal a term that Hawkins used this morning. I'd like to introduce the anatomy of the budget, of how it's put together and how it breaks down, give you two weeks to digest and focus on it in our committee meeting the first week of November. But especially for the new councilors and that, that haven't seen this recently, I wanted to go through a number of accounts and I want to speak about the different kinds of accounts we have and then let you take it home, write down your questions, and then we'll sit down in committee and get into the nitty gritty, was my thought. Is that agreeable to the group?
Jeff, could you maybe explain why we have to present it today?
Sure, and I put this in your background, where we established a policy a number of years ago that we would present to council the first draft of the budget by the second meeting in October, the last council meeting in October. And here we are.
That is why.
And, but it needs some context. It definitely needs context so that you understand where we're coming from. So if that's how we can proceed, I appreciate Hawkins coming. He's here as my support when I get a deer in the headlight looks to a question or don't have the answer, so he's here to help me out. But what I wanted to talk about, council, and I hope this is a good review for the returning councilors, is in a budget, we've got a number of different types of accounts. And this is, this has evolved over even the last couple of years. We budget many different accounts differently and it's an important difference. So the first type of account is your basic revenue and expense account. The money comes in in the year that we tax for and we expend it in the year. Very simple. And that's the bulk of the budget. It's money that came in in that fiscal year and expended in the fiscal year. We also have reserve accounts. And I'll touch on when I get to each of these, I'll show you what I mean. Reserve accounts are money that comes in in a specific year but is spent in a different year for normally a specific purpose. So we tax for it in a year and we save it for a future expense. And we have a number of those. Internally, for Hawkins and Jill and I, we have accounts what we call top-up accounts. And I'll get to these, but specifically they are engineering, legal and snow removal are the three big ones. We never really know exactly how much we're going to need for those year to year. And we'll have a year where we need $50,000 and then we need $5,000. And to try and tax on that kind of volatility is very difficult. It's very difficult to say this year we're only going to tax $5,000 for snow removal and then we need $50. So what do you do? You didn't tax enough. So what we did is we took what we feel is the top number, the cap, and we put that in the budget and we only tax in the following year what we spent in the previous one. So if the snow removal budget is $25,000 and we spent 10, we only tax for 10. And I'll explain that when we get there. So we're just trying to stabilize the taxation, we're trying to take the volatility out of taxation. We have contingency accounts and what that means, and I'll show you some of those, that we have an expense that's only going to be expended if an offsetting revenue comes in. So a good example of that, we have a storm sewer, we have a sanitary and we have a recreation project this year that are big projects, they're all in the budget, but they're contingent on a funding piece. And if we don't get the funding piece, we're not spending the money on project because we won't have the money to spend on it. We simply can't afford it.
You said storm, recreation...
So we have a storm, a sanitary and a recreation project that we're considering contingency expenses and I'll show you those when we get there. We have recovery accounts. This is new as of two years ago. This is where we, when we can do things internally, so when our guys in Public Works can do a project that we had priced at the market value, there is savings there and we recover wages and we recover machine time by doing it internally. And I'll explain that too. But it gives us a way to account for that money. And then of course we have non-cash accounts. These are expenses on the books that actually aren't cash expenses and that's just amortization, depreciation or amortization. So things lose value, so we have to account for that, but we didn't actually spend any money on that loss of value. That's the quick, and I'll show you as we go through those. The other thing to note is on the very left-hand side of the column in the sources is their general ledger accounts, their GL code. So everything is assigned a code and that's how it's tracked year to year and that's how the history is tracked and we use those GL codes. So when I go through this budget, I will go by GL and page number for you, just so we can follow through. So that is a quick overview of what makes up this 14-page spreadsheet. And what I want to do is just highlight probably 20 or 30 accounts to give you an idea of what I was talking about in those types of accounts. And by all means, councilors, anywhere along the way, hit me up with a question. I don't anticipate we're going to delve into the dollars of every item here, just the meaning of each account. Because I want you to have time over the next two weeks to digest it, but understanding what those accounts mean. So any, the first part of our budget, well, our budget's broken into two pieces, operational and capital. The capital's going to be at the end. So everything in this first two thirds of the document is operational. And so we first look at our operational revenues and then we expend them. And your previous council had approved a three-year operating budget. And so we have simply added 2020 on. We've kept 2017 in there for context so you can see what we had this year. 2018 and 19 were conditionally approved and we've added 2020. But to be clear, this is your largest policy document and completely within your purview to manipulate and to change if you see fit based on your priorities. It helps us for planning, but especially with the new council, we anticipate some change. So when we look at our sources of funds, of course, our biggest ones are taxes. And the first three lines are three different taxes. Real property, school for residential and school for commercial. And as, and you'll see on the next page, the school's a flow-through for us. We simply collect it and we submit it to the province.
So non-residential is a commercial?
Is commercial. So we don't have margin on it, we don't take a cut, we simply move it through exactly as we are told by the province how much they have to collect. So we get that number in the spring, you must tax this much for school. And so we pass it on.
Councillor Barnes?
Silly question, but I remember last year, year before, there was a lot of communities that were really blocking at collecting. Has there been any movement to change that? So we're going to continue?
There's no appetite from the province to change that. It's too big of a revenue source that they avoid a lot of scrutiny over.
It's a fixed revenue problem.
It covers about 35% of the total provincial education budget. The rest is funded through provincial income tax.
I was just, no, I was just asking the way it was collected.
No, they're not willing to move on that. It's too good of a vehicle. The municipality bears the risk of non-payment. The municipality bears the liability of non-payment, so they love it.
If somebody doesn't pay, then we pay it anyway.
Doesn't matter. We pay it anyway upfront and then we go after the collection.
In fact, with the bankers for the government, it's unfortunate, that's true.
So of course taxes are your big piece. And one thing I'll mention is we have, and this is kind of an arbitrary number, but go with me, we have a 1.4% increase each year of what we budgeted on. Now that's on the revenue, not on the rate. And the reason that number is there is it's simply what we did last year. So we'll have new assessment this year. So everything that was built and improved and depending on the value of things, that's going to make up most of the 1.4% is assessment and new, new projects. So that's simply why we use that number is what we, it's what we had last year, excuse me. So the next line, this is just an interesting one, 105540, right at the top in revenues, is gas franchise. So we charge Atco Gas to operate in our community and they pay a franchise fee. If we did not on our electrical system, we would charge 40 to stop rate. All other, most other towns charge an electrical franchise fee as well. So it's simply a source of revenue that we can charge to utilities to allow them to have a monopoly in our municipality. That's what that does. And then you see just down a couple, there's one called provincial conditional other. These are simply other miscellaneous or set provincial grants we get to fund on the operational side. Most of our grants is for capital. There's not a lot for operational. So that's, that's what that is. The other biggest sources of revenue are two thirds of the way down on page 1, 141400 and 401. That's, those are, starting to get into our utility revenues. So the 41 accounts, we call them, the one with the 41, that's water. So that's our domestic and commercial water. And then the 42 is just below it, is domestic and commercial sewer. And then 43 is our domestic and commercial garbage and so on. So that's just accounting for our projected revenue in utilities. And that's a huge part of our revenues and a very important part. Before we turn the page over, I just wanted to mention in the account 141413, it's called water custom work. This is the account where last year, two years ago, we started accounting for any credits we received by doing projects ourselves. So what happens, when Brandon puts the cost to capital projects, he does them based on market value. So he says, if we had to hire Tolstrop Construction or GenX to come in and do this project, do a block of sewer, what's the cost? What do we anticipate it to be? So he gets market rates, he gets quotes, we put that together. But then if we do it internally, obviously we don't have the same cost that we would have paid the contractor. And so what we do is we, we take a, we've kind of worked a formula to what percentage do we bring back into the budget that's a credit to us and we use that, we reserve it to fund equipment in Public Works. And we can get into that a lot more later, but the point is when you see that, what is custom work for water and sewer?[1771.28] is custom work for water and sewer? That's the credit we get for the projects that we anticipate we will do internally. So at this point, we're already looking at capital and saying, we're going to contract this one, contract this one, but this one, and this one, and this one, we're going to do internally. We have the manpower and machinery to do these. And for that, we're going to pay less than market value, so there's a credit. And we use it to fund equipment. So that's page one. It's the longest page of seeing what's going over there, but that's page one. Page two is also all revenues, but this is predominantly other revenues, recreation revenues. You see campground, pool, ice rink, civic center. And then the bottom half of that page, all the 1900, 192, 195 accounts, that's our electrical revenue. And, and trust me, council, we'll spend a lot of time talking about this, but sufficient to suffice us to say, we'll talk more about electrical revenue down the line through the budget process.
And maybe you want to talk about 172850.
Oh, that's, yeah, we do get, that's a grant from the county to offset recreation costs, forty-one thousand. And that will be talked about a lot too, because by regulation, that whole, that whole intermunicipal collaboration framework has to change. And so we, we have two years from the election date to establish a new intermunicipal collaboration framework with the county. And so we'll be setting to work on that right away. And that will be quite interesting.
Because it will talk about all the shared services and the cost to the county and the cost to the town.
That's right. It's going to be actually quite a lot of work.
What, what number, what item number is that?
172850.
Oh, right, okay, gotcha.
The only other one I want to mention on this page, the very last one, 195591. So remember, this section is a revenue section. What's all the money coming in for the town? So this is from reserves operating, is what the account's called. That's the account that's saying, have we saved anything from previous years that we're going to cash in this year to fund something this year? That's what that account's saying. So when you see crushing as the first one for forty thousand, last year we taxed forty thousand dollars to pay for crushing this year. So we reserved it last year, and then in this year's budget, we're saying, we're now going to pull it from reserves, and it's going to be included in our total revenues. It's cash that we're not taxing for this year. It will offset costs for this year.
2018, you mean?
Yes, in 2018. Sorry, I should, thank you for that. When I'm saying this year, I mean, mine is in 2018.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, to be clear. When I say last year, I mean.
Seventeen.
I mean seventeen when I say.
I thought that was too.
Yes, thank you, sorry. We get in this mode of what year we're in. So in 2017, we taxed forty thousand dollars for crushing, and we'll keep it until 2018, and it will be expended then.
Counselor, sound.
When is the sunset clause for county share for annexation that was created many years ago?
When is that, Joe?
Beginning of August.
Yeah.
When are we done with that agreement? 2024, it was a twenty-year, within 2014 for the taxes at their rate, and then another ten years past that for us still paying now.
But we're splitting the taxes at our rate, right?
Fifty, fifty.
Yeah, we're splitting the taxes at our rate.
And it's a long time that you have to pay.
So 2024.
Yeah.
Seven more years.
Yeah.
Take me down, take me later.
So you'll also see, is that, did that, everything you wanted on that, councillor? So?
Nope, that's fine.
Oh, okay, good, okay. On that reserves, again, at the very bottom, there's two other things, Lee Creek Reserves for 20 and sewer line and red shale. So for example, in 2017, we didn't purchase any. And so at the end of the year, we said, well, it's because we have to buy a whole train car load now, you can't just buy a truckload from Tolstrop anymore, and we have to buy a train car load out of Saskatchewan, and so you have to have enough to fill the train car. So we didn't spend it last year, we taxed for it again this year, we'll spend the total in 2018 of both. We'll spend fourteen thousand in 2018 to get a train car. So it's, that's just a little aside. So that's how the reserve accounts work when we bring revenue back in. You're going to see in the next section where we tax and then save that money for future years. So what you will see is, we anticipate at this point, total sources of operating funds at nine point three million. We anticipate that's what we will take in in one source or another, is nine point three million dollars in operational revenue, not capital, we'll get to that later. And really, the only difference is, many of our grants are capital-only, so we cannot consider them in the operational budget. So now, sources of operating funds, this is on page three. Like I said at the beginning, school, non-residential and residential, we pass that on to the, it matches what the income was for school tax. And then we start to get into these requisitions that we'll see throughout. So the first one is Shinnuck Foundation requisition. As we get further down, you'll see fire, you'll see solid waste authority, you'll see a number of requisitions. So these are, these are charges that are partially out of our control. We're one party at the table of many, but they are charges that are essentially imposed upon us, and we must pay them. If they are truly a requisition, we do not have discretion as to whether they're paid or not. They are paid, so we don't have the option to patient foundation or not. So that's why it's important for the councillor at the table to be mindful of that dollar. Then the other one I wanted to point, there's some council expenses and those things you can look at. And the first salary account is 212100, and not that this one is anything specific, but what we do with salaries is, we take our total gross salaries for the year, and then we try to anticipate where they're going to be assigned, so we're truly reflecting the cost of that service. So we don't just have a public works wage, and that's everyone in public works. Some of that's in water, some of it's in sewer, some of it's in garbage. Mine's split out about twelve ways. So a little bit of Jeff's wage goes to FCSS and administration, public works, and, and all these different areas. So what we're trying to do is reflect, this is the cost of administration to the town, this is the cost of garbage, this is the cost of water. So when you're looking at that and thinking, how can everyone in the office be under 173400? Well, it's because they're split up all over the place. They're split up in utilities, or they're split up in cemetery, if that's what they're over, or they're split up for FCSS, all that kind of stuff.
So it reflects a true cost of operating that department.
So it's, it's our best estimate at the beginning of the year. And then what we do, especially with public works and utilities, is we journal entry at the end of the year to say, okay, we know that employee A on his timesheet spent X amount of hours on this sewer project. So we allocate it more specifically at the end of the year before the audit. So you'll see that, you'll see a whole bunch of different salary GLs that are specific to a department. And it's the same thing if you just go a little further down, 212203. Insurance is the same way. We have a bulk liability insurance, and the bulk of that falls under administration, what that big fifty-three, fifty-nine thousand dollar number is. But you're going to see in every department, a little bit of insurance. So recreation has some, the rink has some, the pool has some, public works has some, council has some, and on and on. So we try and allocate it to the department to reflect the actual cost. So just, when you're going through the budget, you'll see a lot of that little stuff. Page four, if you're ready to go there. Right in the middle of the page, this is just one of those non-cash, 212999. That's simply an amortization one, and you'll see fifteen of those throughout the budget. So every department has an amortization account where the, where the reduction in value as per the amortization schedule goes. But it's not a cash expense, and you'll see at the end that we, we offset it. We account for it at the end. But we must show our amortization now, and as we get closer to approval of budget, that will come a little further. And I was just looking at 223200 at the bottom of the page, that's our fire requisition. And that one actually has a requisition and a reserve. So we pay the fire department that 928 in 2018, that's cash that we will put out. But the forty thousand, we will tax for and save. So it's not going out this year, we will hold it. And then when the fire department and whoever's on the fire committee approves the purchase of a new piece of equipment, we will then disperse it based on the approval of that equipment. But we hold it and we reap the investment benefit out of it. So that's for us to put in the bank and make the very small amount of interest on it.
Jeff, I noticed most of your requisitions, you've done a two percent increase yearly?
Yeah, so on most of our utilities and those annuals, we've, we've added a two percent inflation piece to be adjusted at each year when we get there.
Okay.
Because we, we just don't know.
Yeah, it could be one point two.
Yeah, that's right. So we'll fine-tune it as we near the end of the year when those requisitions start coming in. But for budget purposes, we've applied two percent to almost utilities, requisitions, any contracts that are long-term, we've applied a two percent inflation piece. On page five, the only thing I wanted to point out here is, at the bottom of page five, 232765, that is, now we're in the expenses now, so this is where we are expensing reserves. Now, in 2018, you'll see, we're not expensing any public works transfer to reserves. But next year, we will. We're going to tax for forty thousand dollars for crushing, and then we're going to save it. And then in 2020, we'll expend it. You saw that on the revenue side. We have forty thousand coming in this year from last year, or in 2018 from seventeen. But we're not going to tax in 2018 for crushing, because we're funding it with the year before. And, well, I shouldn't say we're not going to tax, because we're going to be more than forty thousand, but we'll get into that a little bit later. The point is, we do, we try and specify those reserve accounts. Page six, the only thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, at the bottom of page six, you have two accounts, 242830, 242831. This is, we have a debenture, we have a long-term debt for the sewer outfall line, it goes from the sewer plant to the St. Mary's. So that just shows the principal and interest portion in the current year.
But we're not carrying a rider on any of our deals, right?
No, the debenture is considered at the utility rate, it isn't a rider.
All right, thank you.
And then 2020, that's paid for.
Is it 2025?
Twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah. So we'll show, and in fact, we have an unconventional principal and interest repayment for you, I'll show you a little bit later. But that's our only true debenture, bank borrowing right now, and it's getting really close to being paid. Page seven, again, right at the bottom of the page, 261200. This is just an example in Planning General of it, what we call internally as a top-up account. So at the bottom, we have engineering and miscellaneous. So sometimes we will find where a grant comes up. And for example, there's a grant called the resiliency grant, and you're going to see that here in just a minute, because we've applied to it. And there's a great opportunity to apply for it, but we need an engineer to do a drawing and design something. So council, I think two years ago, for you returning councillors, we approved this ten thousand dollars, but if we don't use it, we simply carry it forward and we don't tax for it again. We only tax for what's spent in the year. So I imagine this year, we'll spend two or three thousand dollars of it, because we were doing design for the resiliency grant. And so in 2018, we'll tax for the difference, what we spent in 2017, but only the difference. So that's just an example of, we're trying to level out the tax implication. I didn't have anything else until page nine. And again, you can go through, they're just all the different department expense accounts. Go through them, make questions, highlight, mark it up. There is nothing that can't be discussed openly and discussed in the budget, so.
And for each of your committees, you will find the amount.
If they're giving money.
That is budgeted, if there is money given.
Not all of them are.
In general, you have at least one large requisition on each of your assignments. Counselor, sound.
Yeah, yeah, just, this is a question, I was talking with Leonard a few days ago, and he'd mentioned he'd applied for a grant for some LED lighting, street lighting.
Correct.
Have you heard anything on that yet?
So that is one, actually, that, that's an interesting scenario, that line item is probably going to change as this budget develops. The provinces, you know, has come out with a lot of energy efficiency dollars. We've been starting doing twenty thousand a year of LED retrofit on the streetlights. It looks like if we get that grant, we could actually do quite a bit more in a given year. And it's applied for and it's in, and we're just waiting, but we don't know. It was going to pay, I think, seventeen thousand, does that sound right? I think it was seventeen thousand we would be eligible for, which is this huge percentage of the total project. So the question was, and we'll talk about this at a future meeting, do we expedite the conversion? So do we continue to tax for and spend twenty thousand plus the seventeen? Or do we spend a very small amount of our local money and spend the grant? We're really just kicking a can down the road, because the intent is to, to get them all converted over time anyway.
Yeah.
But that's a discussion for another day, but we don't, when we present you this in October, many times, we've got 1.3 million in resiliency funding here that we have no idea if we're getting yet.
Yeah.
We just don't know yet.
Yeah.
Jeff, back up to 261200, because I serve on ORSC. What is that contract made up of? How is that determined?
Which one?
Yeah, 261200, the Planning General.
Yeah. The ORSC contract.
Yeah, they're essentially taking their total operational expenses and dividing them per capita.
Per capita?
Yeah, over all their municipalities.
Is there any of those expenses in there that we could do internally?
With ORSC?
And whatever.
Well, we could have a heck of a debate about whether we should belong to ORSC or not. Sure, sure, I actually support ORSC, by the way, I don't want to give any privacy notions.
I, I agree, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, that's quite a bit of money, you know?
So the difference would be, is that you would hire a planner.
Which customer?
Not a development officer. You would hire an educated planner that does that, and you would bail out ORSC. Now, the interesting thing is, ORSC has a ton of members with hired, and a ton of the municipalities have hired planners and still belong to ORSC. So there's a value there that they've perceived, and you have large municipalities with multiple planners who still are ORSC members. So that's something we can discuss as we go down this, you know, as we get into the nitty-gritty, because I'm not sure we're in a position we'd want to entertain that.
You know, we discussed that this past term, in fact, and we looked at it because we were concerned about the requisition. And when we start to do an analysis of what it would cost a town to have a planner for the amount we would use it, and the, the tools that ORSC has, we couldn't, we could not offer to the planner. So at the end of the day, we looked at it, and there was no mistaking for having a planner. That was the story.
Things like their GIS system, we couldn't duplicate locally for any kind of dollars. I mean, we have a satellite image system that shows where every piece of utility, hydrant, water shut-off sign is. We couldn't duplicate that without incredible software expense internally, and we use that resource a lot. So those, yeah, there's important things.
Okay, now, then the question to lead up to that, because the county and the town are contracted with ORSC.
Well, I think twenty-one others, yeah.
Okay.
Forty-some.
Oh, forty-some. My concern, my question is, the intermunicipal agreement, could we piggyback, back and forth, some of this ORSC stuff with the county?
That's a discussion we could have. My guess is there's some reason why forty-one municipalities belong to them, that there's, there's a level of expertise there that locally people aren't generating? That's my feeling, I just haven't looked into this a lot.
And they're bringing new members on all the time, they just brought the city of Brooks on this last month.
Jeff, could it be maybe possible to have Ryan come and explain a little bit of the services?
He's already offered that, actually, it's going to be on your CCW agenda for him to come out.
I think the poor new council would be a very important person to come and address it.
He's already reached out and offered that and sent me out, presentation you got to give to council.
I'm glad that you have a council call.
I want to back up for half a second, maybe this isn't the time, but we talked about LED lighting. A lot of communities that have gone LED do not like it at all, because it's not bright enough, specifically Raymond, and this is a different kind of LED lighting than they're using. Because I've heard nothing but complaints from my relatives and friends down there.
Yeah, Raymond on the.
I'm not sure, councillor. We're not hearing much of that locally.
I like the lighting myself, but they're going to pay this stuff right. Now, I don't prefer using a different system.
Okay, Raymond is being retrofitted by Fortis, and apparently the wattage is not high enough.
That's what it is, yeah.
So we have a different system, we're doing it in-house.
Sounds good.
Jeff, Jeff, when we talk about street lighting, are we not legislative for luminous?
I'd have to find that out. The Electrical Act is not my forte, right? But I can find it out.
I think there's something to do with luminous, uh, lumens.
Anyways, uh, we...
It's definitely a different light though, there's no question.
I mean, if you hear any complaints, in the past four years, I have not heard one single complaint. Uh, in fact, I heard complaint on the other side, it's too bright.
So we've been going to these LEDs for a while then?
Yeah, we're about four years in, I think.
The only light I hear is Halloween night, when you drive around, you cannot see those little kitties out on that street.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you feel there is an issue with the level of light, then bring it forward, and we'll have our initial look at it. Counselor South?
Okay, I gotta go on a different direction.
Sure.
FCSS.
Okay, FCSS, which, which...
Let's go back, it is, the expense is in the 245, yeah, 250700, page seven.
Right. Okay, I'm looking at...
You might be looking at the income piece, right?
Yes.
So you are back in...
I'm on the first page.
Yeah.
And I'm looking on page...
Right at the bottom, and I think, I know your question, I think I've got your answer, but go ahead. Why is it so despairingly different?
Right.
Okay.
And I know we get grant funding first, but what, what does this break out as a portion of the town's portion?
Okay, alright.
So we can maximize the grant.
Good question. So page one, very last GL, 153840. So we are the managing partner for the town, the county, and the villages for FCSS. Uh, page one is the revenue side.
What page are you on here?
151840, sorry if I said 53.
The very last line.
Yeah, I've got, it was just the 53 threw me off.
Sorry. So we are the managing partner, and as such, when we show the revenue, we show the total eventual grant, and then we show the revenue that comes in from the other municipalities to support that. So our portion, and Hawk, do you know off the top of your head?
27,000.
Is what we're, so that's the town's taxable portion at the end of the year.
We show revenue of 249,980 from the province and the other partners, and then all the 251 expense accounts add up to 277,518.
Right.
So the difference between the revenues and the total of the expenses becomes what we tax for.
Right. So 27,000 in this case.
27,000 and change.
And change, okay.
Okay.
So yes, I agree councillor, that looks very oddly weighted when you look at that one. But yes, we, we actually, it would've been, three, four years ago, we were able to get to better equity with the county on that, because their portion was only $2,000 until just a few years ago.
Right.
And so we finally had to bring the province in and say, if you wanna be a part of the program, you have to pay a year per capita share.
Right.
And we got that up where it needed to be, so...
That is a percentage, but honestly, I am not so 100% sure if we paid 51%, I paid 47, and Plan 1-2, and Plan 3-1.
The percentages is that the participating municipalities have to make up 25% of the total budget, and that's broken down per capita.
Per capita.
So ours is like Hawk said, 27 and change apparently.
Yeah.
Okay, you good on that one then, councillors? Okay, page nine, this one's a brand-new one for us in the budget, and there's a little bit, I'll admit, a bit of guesswork here because we simply don't have the history. The very bottom of the page, actually, oh, mine would've been at the bottom of the page, interestingly enough. At the bottom of the page, 272302, and I use this, this is both for the Civic Center and the ice material, we have an unconventional debt. We put solar panels to net zero, the Civic Center and the ice rink, and NMAX is financing it. So they were more competitive than conventional lenders or the Alberta Finance Capital Authority. And so what we've done is we brokered the financing to be as close as we could to our normal electrical payments. So what you'll see in this is we have energy savings from the NMAX, we anticipate in 2018 to save $9293, and our loan payment is going to be $10,944. Now, the Civic Center's actually more bang-on than that, but that's as close as we could broker the rink. And so the intent was, it wasn't gonna add operational costs to do that retrofit, that the energy savings would pay the majority of the financing. So that's just an unconventional one that you'll see, and you'll see that again on the Civic Center. Page 10, and we're getting through this, council, I promise. Page 10, 272762, this is just simply a reserve where we set all the reserves. So when we do our budget, there are reserves that are made by motion years ago that are still in place, so they would've said however many years ago, we're going to put away $10,000 a year for, forever, for this use. So for example, when we started building the pool, we had $660,000 in cash before we did any fundraising or grant writing, because council in 20, 30 years ago, wanted 20,000 a year put away. So we had a lump of cash when we started that process. So that's what you're seeing in 272762. These are things that we are taxing for in this current year, so in 2018, that whole list will be taxed for, and then it will be put into a reserve of a specific nature. The town of Carson does not have a lot of unrestricted reserves, I mean, we have some, but we don't just have a bunch of cash sitting in the bank for fun. We just aren't in a lucrative enough position to have it. But we do have earmarked savings. We have things earmarked for specifics expenditures down the road, and that list you'll see there in recreation. Now, each department has those, I'm just pointing out the recreation reserves. So you know what I was talking about with that. So on page 11, near the end...
I just have a quick question on 10. So, yeah, can you, so I don't know the comings and goings of the golf course and all of that, but I just see on here golf course materials, golf course clubhouse contract.
Correct.
Can you explain that to me?
You bet. So under the current contract, we have a group that is managing on our behalf.
Right.
But we are under that contract responsible to pay the insurance, and we always have a few little general, we've had just a few little things that have come up, so we've helped them with, they had like black knot in the trees that was threatening to wreck all the trees, so I said, look, we'll jump in for 1,500 bucks on that.
Right.
Because it's staying in perpetuity with the golf course forever.
Yeah.
And they inherited the problem. So it's just a little bit of slush we've had for general, and then the chemicals, we go spray the weeds on the golf course twice a year for them. That's the chemical cost to do it.
Okay.
And then you see the next one, um...
Clubhouse.
We pay them $5,000 for their contract a year. And then, in the reserves, there's a golf course reserve as well. And that was set up because it was anticipated that when the contract expires, or at some point in time, we're going to have costs to keep that going. And so we're gonna have a little kitty of cash that will help us do that, depending on how this plays out going forward.
When you...
Go ahead.
Sorry, when you say that, so are they year-to-year contract with us?
No, their contract goes through 2019, but as with any contract, we both have outs.
Okay.
So we can both exercise options to expire it, to terminate it, I should say.
And there are clauses attached to it.
And do they pay us for, how, how does that work? Do they...
On the termination or general?
No, on general.
Yeah.
So the town owns the golf course?
Correct.
And the black sands, whatever they're called, they sublet it from us, or they...
So that's how it started.
Oh.
When it started, they were paying us annually.
Okay.
That wasn't working for them financially, so right now, it's sitting that we pay them 5,000 to manage it on our behalf.
Okay.
Now, we will, I can tell you, I'm not trying to be a crystal ball here, we will be having discussions on black sands near the end of the year, and I'll make sure that contract is very explicit and understood by council, but the short story is, we're paying them 5,000 and covering a couple of those costs. So with the insurance, for example, we own the land, we have to have liability on it.
Yes.
If it all burns down, we need something.
Of course.
We're the owner.
Okay.
In the contractor obligations, they inherited everything that was there when they took it over, and there was a value assigned.
Okay.
So they're obligated to put back that value when they leave, whenever that is.
Okay.
So that we will inherit the same value that they inherited. Now, it may not be the exact bore and the exact golf cart.
Right.
Too much time has passed.
Right.
But the value's gotta be there.
Okay.
And so that's what will be, be discussed down the road here.
Okay.
So that's how that's working in short.
Thank you.
And the value, there is a process for evaluating the, the value, it's not going to be us or them, it's going to be a third party assessing it privately.
Fourth. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So that, yeah, that was a real quick nutshell on that. So page 11, are we okay to move on?
Counselor Brown? We want to ask a question. Jeff, the golf course is much sooner for our campground, we contract our campground out, but we do a lot of repairs at the campground.
Well, the arrangement's very different, in fact, we share revenue with the campground contractors.
Yeah.
Where we don't have a revenue source on the camp, on the golf course, that's for that, they need that to stay afloat. They need every penny of revenue up there just to make it work, because their overhead and expenses are far beyond what we're asking of our campground contractors.
They're guaranteed a certain amount of revenue beyond that, it is the downswing.
Well, actually, I'll flip that. We split the revenue up to a certain amount, and above that, they keep what's left.
Yeah, that's true.
That's how that works, so I think it's a...
The campground.
Yeah, up to 105,000, we split it.
Yes, that's what it is.
Or 100,000, we split it, and then they keep it after that 100, if they, if they go over that 100,000.
Oh, yes, that's right. I had it exactly the opposite.
Yeah.
But, you are correct.
The campground indicated there was 100-some dollars that was revenue to the town, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Up to 100,000.
No, the revenue portion would've been, sorry, let me grab a quick, let me find that out, so I'm not telling you stories. Yes, so, you're right, 172402, it's on page two, the campground shows 100,000 dollars in revenue. What happens is, we take in all the revenue.
Right.
So they bring everything to us. At the end of the month, here's our total revenue, here's the check to the town, we cut them back a portion for their services. So we book the total revenue, but then we also book the offsetting expense that we net out.
Right, okay, so in reality, we got 50,000 and change.
Correct.
They got 50,000 and change.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we just show the expenses, because the contracted expense for the town. Yeah. So at the end of page 11, you see the total uses of operating funds, 10.734943 million, to get quite exact. Now, that includes the amortization, which is a non-cash expense, so we back that out. And what the net source is, and this is pretty common, in our operational side of our budget, we have a surplus of 673,000. And that is essentially the tax dollars we need to do capital stuff, so we're now gonna move that to capital to fund capital, is how that works. So it's pretty common to see a surplus in the operational side, because you needed to have taxed for some of your capital stuff. That's how it needs to work.
Replacing stuff.
So then, we'll hit the capital fairly quickly. Now, for capital, we actually have a five-year budget on this, in this document, we've just shown you the three, but we do have this out of five, and in our infrastructure master plan, we have it out of 20. Uh, but we'll get into those things later. So what it shows, the first part at the bottom of page 11, is our capital revenue, where we get our money from, to do capital stuff. MSI, the Municipal Sustainability Initiative, you are going to get incredibly knowledgeable of that little acronym and the issues around that grant, but for right now, it's our best and most lucrative capital funding grant, hands down. 791, 798,000 is what we anticipate we will use out of MSI in 2018. We also get federal gas tax, so when you go to the pump and you pay that nice little percentage on top of the fee, you can take some solace that we get a little bit of that back. And that's what the 195,000 is, so if you feel a little bit better about the price of gas.
I mean, it's a pound, it's a ton. Just went up today.
And then this one, the 107852 on the bottom of page, or top of page 12, sorry. This is some of those specific grants where we're applying for a specific project. So things like the CIP grant, Canada 150, we have that already applied, and it's been given to us for the pool in 2018, for the renovation project. So we have that there as revenue in 2018. We are currently, I have Alex applying for demonstration grants for the ice rink floor mats, which is a capital expense, you'll see later. And then the next two are big numbers, the 761 and 568. There's a program, it's an eight-year program from the province called the Community Resiliency Grant, and it was put in place following High River and all the flooding, for municipalities to build up their stormwater infrastructure, and to prepare for future flooding. To get your infrastructure in place, you won't have it, frankly, to mitigate future flooding is the better word. We have applied for two grants under that, which you will see later in the capital project, and it actually pays 90% of the project. So it's a really good grant. We used it this last year for the intake at Lee Creek. So that was 90% funded by a resiliency grant. So we're really hopeful on these grants, and we'll talk about that project in a bit. And then we also have, the next one is loan proceeds. So in the event that we need to borrow, and it's not common, but you'll see in 2017, that's what we borrowed for the solar systems, the 53 and the 141. That was the debentures, we called them, or loan systems, loan proceeds, sorry, for the solar systems. Right now, we have earmarked in 2018, and this, we'll have a lot more discussion about this down the road, 150,000 borrowing to finish the pool. For the new councillors, there's a motion on the table from the previous council to borrow up to 500,000 to finish the total pool project. Thankfully, to this point, and knock on wood of anything unforeseen, we haven't had to access any borrowing yet. And we actually have a couple ways to potentially navigate not needing this or mitigating it, but we put it in here to earmark, to facilitate the discussion going forward. So we wanted it on the page so we could discuss it going forward. And then you see on 195592, so these are funds we've been saving for years, that now we're bringing into the budget as revenue to fund capital. So however long it's been reserved, whether it's been one year, 10 years, 20 years, doesn't matter, it's coming in to fund, and one thing at the bottom of that, so that same GL, 195592, you have a long list of reserves, most of them from last year. But this year, at the bottom, we have a 65 and a 50,000 one, and you'll see it's to replace a John Deere loader and a water truck. And that funding is coming partially for that equipment, from our equipment reserves. So remember when we do projects in-house and we save some money, and so we can reserve that for future? That's, that's the circle of life of that money. So we reserve it, and then it comes back when we need to fund public works equipment. That's the intent of it.
Jeff, we talked about the circle replacement sort of thing, under that 95592, wastewater treatment plant, they got a tandem truck, they're not doing anything in 2018, but it looks like 2019.
Yeah.
Uh, but down, under your public works, 232762, you're replacing a tandem truck, unit number 44. Could that tandem truck that we're replacing from public work go into the wastewater treatment plant?
So that was, that one's bought and done, that was 2017.
Right.
And I'm just not prepared now to speak to the fleet replacement schedule. Bart's looking at that and what he needs, and I just, I don't have that in front for tonight.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's been considered, and sometimes they just need retired, you know, sometimes that's what has to happen with those, but to that specific one, I couldn't say, but I can speak to that later as we go through the process.
Thank you.
No, but item 44 is in 2017.
Right, that's here, and we're using it, it's going.
It's already here, the equipment is here.
Yeah. So then we just get into our uses of capital, and there's nothing, again, you can go through the items for each year. Um, I didn't really have anything in particular to touch on, because you can look at the items at your leisure and look at what we're planning. One thing you'll find with pavement sewer water is they're usually all the same. So we're trying to get out of this habit of replacing pavement on a road and then two years later digging up to replace the waterline. So you will see, I've made the joke before, and it's not funny, but we laugh so we don't cry, that new asphalt's easier to dig through because it's soft. So we like to do that. But we haven't done that in a lot of years. Now, do we have occasional service lines that break under new asphalt? Yep, you do, and you can't foresee it, and you can't do anything about it. But we've had this good pragmatic approach to underground utility, and then the paving, and then underground utility and paving.
Counselor Brown?
Jeff, 272027.
Yeah.
Okay, it was done in 2017, 30,000 for the walking trail south of Knight Town and Bridge.
Correct.
Is that not the responsibility of that builder down there?
So it was partially, yes. We had an agreement, his development agreement, that the council has actually been reserving that money for about four years.
Yes.
We budgeted it, I think, about four years ago and then put it in reserves, that we would contribute, that was our maximum contribution to a trail system through that development. Yeah, no, the project was substantially, I think it was a little better than double that.
Okay.
And the council at the time had agreed to contribute because as long as... We received easements over every parcel for that trail, so it's a public trail. And in return, we would contribute up to thirty thousand.
Thank you.
Towards the construction.
So are we finishing that trail? So one trail meets up with the other one? No, it's not.
No, no, it doesn't meet up down at the golf course, uh, bridge or anything yet. It stops about two-thirds of the way through, yep.
I'm saying, are we, isn't it our goal to finish it?
Okay. Counselor Brown, this is an excellent question. And when we do the strategic planning, this will be part of things that will be brought forward as priority of council eventually.
I have some feelings on that. We can discuss when we're not here right now.
Okay.
I think there's a bit of an obligation to go a little further than it did.
Yeah.
We can get into that a little bit more. So...
Counselor Paul, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the Senate tasks, I've kind of been involved in that.
Yep.
Uh, is that, must put aside for this thing?
Which T L, are you in the...
On the last page.
Yeah.
Two, yeah.
So what we have is...
Two seven two four one seven.
We anticipated the full expense of fifty thousand, but we have an offsetting contribution of thirty-five in the revenue.
I anticipated it won't cost the town hardly anything, I hope.
Even better. But we wanted to capture it in this budget so that it was considered going forward. So we estimate, we estimated a thirty-five thousand dollar revenue and a fifty thousand dollar expense.
Hopefully, it won't cost us anything.
To be massaged as we go along, for sure.
Okay.
So then what you see at the end of all that, on page fourteen, is total capital expense budgeted in 2018 of three million eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And we're going to use six hundred and thirty-seven thousand of operating that we had as a surplus, which balances the budget. Now, as we go forward, council, and the previous council will remember, we did not talk tonight about what level of reserves you want to see in different accounts. We haven't had a lot of that discussion, and I didn't really want to get into that. We've been here, you know, almost three hours now. So I want to just, again, introduce how this thing sets up and what it looks like. And I'd like to devote a big chunk of C C W to just going through the priorities of council and how much you want to reserve and how, what's your appetite for tax changes and all those nitty-gritty pieces as we start getting closer.
Jeff, when we talk about that reserve, we have a violent place right now for reserves, do we not?
Um, we have a number of reserves that are set by Resolution Council, yes.
Okay.
But what I mean is, you'll remember last year, we have that major, what did we call it? The major capital?
Major utility capital.
Major utility capital. Council was trying to set a goal to keep that at a good level, looking to the future, to fund fut... What if, sorry, I'll back up one for the new councillors especially. The concern was, last year, we were told MSI was over. It was done. Now, the N D P decided, we're already in a big enough hole, what's another couple of years? So we did two more years of agreement for MSI. But right now, we only have an agreement with the province through 2018 for MSI. So the question was, what if it goes away? It's eight hundred grand a year. What are we going to do? And what we said is, let's start reserving for major utility capital out of the utility rate. So we're going to fashion the utility rate to give us what we're hoping is around a hundred thousand a year in major utility reserves, so that we have money in the utility to fix that utility. So if we've got to spend a hundred and twenty grand on a block of water line, the utility rate is funding that if MSI disappears. But we weren't, so, yes, council, there are specific reserves by resolution, for sure. The major utility capital was left at the discretion annually based on the needs in the budget.
Okay.
So we've had years, you'll remember, that were above your goal, and we had years below, simply based on the priority in that budget.
All right.
So we will definitely, you'll remember last year, our two biggest discussions were, what's your tolerance for a tax increase and how much do you want to reserve?
Exactly.
And that's what we got down to at the very end. So we'll definitely find our way back there. No question.
And the climate is still very uncertain with the present government. We do not know if there is any certainty for municipality to be able to say there will be the MSI in 2019. They keep on playing with it, and they haven't found yet a formula that will replace MSI. But the MSI program is at its end of life. So we know that something has to happen, but we don't quite know what.
But remember, 2019, your election year, provincial election.
Maybe.
You could come back.
Just real quick, Hawkins was saying, just so you're aware, and you have the policy, you'll get, you'll get it, we'll amend this version every time and try and get it closer. December is when you need to pass an operating budget. What that looks like, we'll see. But remember also that you don't pass your mail rate till April. And so we don't know our requisitions. We don't know school requisitions, all those until the new year. So we, we need something to proceed for the new year, and then we adjust and fine-tune those last couple of requisition pieces in the spring.
And then we don't know what the assessment value is either until much later in the spring. So we are always very tentative over there, until May comes along.
Well, thank you for listening to me for a long time. Get used to it.
Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Hawkins, for that presentation of budget. It was very informative. Do you have comments or questions, councillor, regarding this process? Any of you know? All right.
I'll make a point of meeting with Peter prior to the C C W, just so he's up to the same spot you guys are too.
All right. Thank you. So let's go on to the sixth, other business, community awareness evening. I don't know how many of you have gone to that evening. It is a very exciting evening where the community comes together to see what clubs and organizations are in town and what they're doing. So if you are interested for us to have a booth, we have a theme this year, I just was looking at it. And the theme is caring hearts build community spirit. And really, we're all caring hearts. We're volunteering here at this table because we care about our community. We have done different type of presentation at that booth. This year could be simply to be there. And if we have, um, the opportunity to talk with people and try to find out what it is that interests them or what projects they would like to see in town, that's a time to really ask those questions. And maybe what we could do is build it around that idea. Try to get from the people who come there to give us a little bit of feedback or give us information of what it is that they would be passionate about to see in town or the ones, the need.
What's the date on that again?
It's in November, it's the twenty-seventh of November. It's normally from six to eight.
So it's right after U M.
Yeah.
Monday.
Yeah, say, it's six thirty to eight, but honestly, the people are there at six. So in general, I'm there at six. And what we do, we take about a half an hour.
An hour, you have an hour shift.
Half an hour shift, kind of. So we all have a chance to meet people. But if you all want to be there at the same time, you can. We will give you a, uh, a time that you pick yourself. And if you're there earlier or later, it's up to you.
And the new councillors provide lunch and forth.
Behave.
Not allowed to hit meetings.
All right, so essentially, can you give me a sense, do you want a booth there?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, yes, all right. So we will have a booth, and we will work around the idea a little bit more, how far more, informer, we want it this year.
I have a question to ask regarding that night. And this is to Jill. What do we have for giveaways for that? Do we have boxes of stuff to give away?
The town will have to figure out pen and...
We can, but we don't.
Yeah, because we don't have a lot of time if we're going to do something.
Pens and pens.
People do expect it.
Frisbee and...
Well, they have a prize giveaway.
We gave water bottles last year.
See, this is councillor Bangry's from the last night.
No, 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 that's, that's been in that drawer for years.
All right. Okay, so administration will, you don't need a motion to that effect? Do you want one?
Make a motion to sign up for the community awareness meeting.
Paula, Counselor Brown, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. I make a motion that we sign up for the community awareness evening on November twenty-seventh, starts at six o'clock.
No, that's good enough.
Yep.
Good that we have a booth. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's move on. The next one is a very interesting one. Six B Public Land Alliance. If you went through this, uh, request of public land use, the Paul Haven Community pasture meeting, you will see that what they're trying to understand or discuss is a use of that pasture for different purposes. Overnight camping, crossback riding, off-road vehicle gathering, firewood, Christmas pre-cutting, which a lot of people have done up to now. At this point, all that is forbidden. It's totally closed to the public, and it's a public land. So what they're trying to do is to explore possibilities of wise use of that public land. So what they are requesting is to have a councillor to go to a Wednesday, November eighth meeting from nine to twelve to represent the town.
I could do that.
So who would like to do that? Counselor Self, would you like to do that? Counselor Henry? Counselor Self, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, so how many of you would support councillor Self going? Okay, all of you, fine. So this is your appointment, councillor. And stay in touch with administration to get the details.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question. Who is doing this?
If you look at it down below, it's Public Land Alliance.
So who are they concerned citizens?
Yeah, that's what concerns me because the county of Carson has control over that at this point in time because they rented it out to different ranchers and people I've had for grazing and so forth. And I'm just wondering...
It's been leased out to them, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering where this...
Bit of a background, because my, I know guys are involved in this. A few, couple of years ago, was it, the province basically told those guys to either clean it up or we're shutting it all down to everybody.
Exactly.
And that's why it came about where they locked everybody out, except for the guys that are running their cows out there. These guys want to open it back up again under a certain control so that it can be used. It is public land.
It is public land.
They understand that there has been abuse to it. They would like it reopened under certain conditions, is basically what they're looking at.
Okay.
Right.
Is that correct, councillor Self?
Yeah, it's exactly what I understood. All right, so councillor Self will be appointed to represent the town. Thank you, councillor. Now, the next one is a fun one. If you have a family and want to go to Fort MacLeod, Santa Claus Parade, if you have children, grandchildren, by all means, let me know who wants to go. We need one councillor to go. And be prepared to be under bare blankets and freeze yourself and...
When is it?
It's on the twenty-fifth of November, Saturday. It's right after A U M. We just get home. And I've been before, and I'd be prepared to go again if you want.
Okay, so let's try to figure out if somebody else wants to go. If somebody else wants to go and freeze themselves, by all means, you can have it. No?
It can be warm and it can be really cold.
Well, close your arms and enjoy it with your grandchildren. And you can report to us if it's forty below like last year.
I'll warm up really good.
Okay, thank you.
I went four years ago, and then the next year was councillor Edmonds, and he turned around because it was a blizzard.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And this is our first meeting, so interesting. You need a motion here in a minute to extend.
Yes.
To whatever time you think you'll be done.
Yeah, well, we're going to do it tonight, and hopefully, we'll be done way before then.
I made that motion to extend till nine o'clock.
Thank you. But councillor, don't take it as we need to be there.
But we don't have to go that far.
Question about that? None, please. All in favor? Thank you. I mean, don't take the liberty to extend. All right, let's go on to eight. Every month, you not only have financial report, but now that this meeting. Committee and other reports. If you are part of a committee, that is when you will see the report. And Jeff will gently remind us to send the reports. So this time, there were very few. Uh, you have one from the development office, that's Noran, who does this one.